We're here in the Nashua North Boardroom on Thursday, November 7th, 2019, for a special meeting of the Nashua Board of Education. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the role?
Okay. This will not be in order because I don't have the order memorized. But I will do my best. Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Ms. Van... Mr. Mosher, you're joining us by telephone? Are you by yourself tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver is also joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself tonight, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Ms. Timmons is not here. Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Hohensie?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. So this evening, we are here to discuss the middle school project. At this time, we are at the point in the project where we, the Board of Education, need to decide which of the two options we would like the JS SBC and the architects to pursue and focus their energies on. So we have two options. Option one is to renovate Elm Street Middle School at a cost of $93,476,798 or thereabout. And option two is to build a new middle school at an estimated cost of $78,132,350. So what we're here today is to discuss which of those the Board feels is most appropriate and come up with a decision so that we can pass it on to the JS SBC. Okay? So did anyone want to start with a motion? Ms. Oden?
I would make a motion to accept building a new middle school at a cost of $78,132... $1 million?
Seventy-eight million.
Seventy-eight million. I'm sorry. What a bargain.
And I heard Mr. Mosher second that?
Yes, I believe he did.
That's right.
Great. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I?
Yes.
Can I speak to my motion? Putting over $15 million more into Elm Street just seems like we wouldn't be getting much for our money. We'd still have a parking problem there. We wouldn't have any feels for the students. We wouldn't be able to bring it up to state specs because it is so old. I just think it would be money better spent and less money by building a new school. We have the land. The land was put away back when Hall's Corner was being considered. It was put away for a school. And I just think having Elm Street construction for four years is tremendously disruptive. So I support the new middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I should note that the state has a wonderful guide called "The Manual for Planning and Construction of School Buildings," and they have a whole section on helping... just a guide on how to evaluate your options when you're talking about renovation versus new construction. And I wanted to just bring our attention to a couple of items. If anybody has the manual, it's pages 12 and 13. And some of the questions that it suggests that we ask ourselves are: What are the overall condition of the existing building? How well does the existing building meet the needs of the current educational programs? And is it physically possible to make necessary changes on the existing site? It also notes that the need for historical preservation by itself does not outweigh the school board's responsibility to provide the community with high-quality education at a reasonable cost. It talks about energy efficiency as well. Typically, new buildings are more energy efficient. But it says, "At the end of the day, the choice of renovation or new construction should be based on the lifecycle costs of the alternatives tempered by non-monetary factors such as the ability of an existing building to support the educational program, historical preservation, reduction of sprawl, or preservation of open land." So I thought that was interesting and helpful when I was considering what we should do Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I will be voting against this proposal as it's been made. And I'm glad you made reference to this document. It says indicators of a good planning process. "The district has a detailed comprehensive plan for programs, demographics, and facilities for five years into the future. This plan, as presented, has no enrollment data historical and no projections going forward. The basis of 800 people in each building is based on no data but a belief that when we build it, they will come. The fact is, we lose and have lost... We used to be a district of 13,000 students. We're now down to 11,100. District compiles annual reports for each building. We don't have that. We do have plant ops. The things that disturbed me the most are: The district has demographic maps showing where each student lives and the attendance boundaries for each school. Now, in this proposal, the students, the 1,100 students at Elm Street, will be moving to either a new school or to Penachuck or to Fairgrounds. Now, for that to happen, the district needs to be redistricted. And this plan, as presented, includes no discussion about how that might happen, what the cost might be for that. Additionally, the new plan does not address the transportation of those 1,100 students and what that will do to the bus costs, which are significant. It costs us about $55,000 a bus. I don't know how many buses we might have to add or... I mean, but that's not in their plan. Five-year enrollment projections are maintained for each school. There are no enrollment projections in the plan as presented. Oh, the district does not rush completion of major construction projects to meet arbitrary completion dates. So at a JS SBC meeting, they said, "Oh, we want to break ground in the spring for this." So to me, there's an arbitrary start date without adequate preparation for the things that I just mentioned. There's also a lack, a minor detail in the plan unless it's changed in the last week where the piece of land, the 20 acres that the city owns, is essentially landlocked by a piece of privately-owned property, which is where they want to put the entrance. So the entranceway to the city-owned lot is not owned by the city, and the city does not have a right-of-way to go through that individual's property to the district. If we move forward with this plan, you have just given tremendous leverage to that property owner that they could turn around and say, "Okay, you want to build there? You're going to break ground in the spring? You've got your authorization? Well, okay, I don't know exactly what my price is." They've been talking to him for months. There's no right-of-way for the district to use to get into the proposed location of the new middle school. We have detailed analysis of road improvements for Penachuck and Fairgrounds. They did a very good job of highlighting that. But that does not exist for the new building. That was something Alderman Dowd said would be dealt with in the future. It does not address the extreme need for a K-12 special education out of district tuition costs. It has a proposal as an option, which I don't know if it's included in that $78 million. I don't believe it is included in that $78 million. So this does not include... Somebody can correct me later. Does not include the special education proposal, which was an add-on. Doesn't address moving Brentwood from the leased space, which costs us $140,000 a year. There's still no explanation of the square footage utilization. In the proposed renovations for Fairgrounds and Penachuck, the building square footage is somewhere between 125,000 and 135,000 square feet. The new middle school building is 193,000, and the architects have still not explained what that extra 70,000 square feet is all about. It preempts, and this is an important consideration, if the Board votes tonight to move this forward, it preempts the ability of the newly-elected Board of Education and Alderman to participate in this major decision. So newly-elected people, five people, five new people are coming onto this Board in just six or seven weeks, and they will have no voice. The people just voted these people in, and this Board is willing to deny those newly-elected people a voice in this decision that they will be responsible for implementing over the next four years. There's been no public hearing at all, either at the JS SBC level or even at the Board level, about this. I think it's premature to move this forward. Additionally, I believe that a public hearing should be held at each school location, at Fairgrounds, at Penachuck, and also at Elm Street, to get feedback from the public on what this means. I talked about the redistricting plan. The manual that Ms. Raymond cited also suggested there be a development of a technology plan. So we're building, you know, a new building, nearly 200,000 square feet. I don't recall any information about how technology was going to be used, digital learning, that stuff. We talked about classrooms. And then I'll just stop with one more. There's no staffing plan. With the move from one building to another, how would staff be moved around? Are we going to emphasize certain things? How many incremental hires? How many flat-out new hires because we have new programs? And then what's the expected retirement rate or exit rate? So without these essential questions being answered prior to a decision, a no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman brings up a number of very important detailed points. And I think there's a misunderstanding about what this motion does. At this point, we're at a preliminary stage. This motion doesn't authorize anyone to break ground. It doesn't finalize any plans. It merely gives the architects and the JS SBC the go-ahead to investigate all of those things that Mr. Kaufman brought up. And then all that information has to come back to the Board in detailed plans before anything is finalized. But the JS SBC and the architects need to know from us which option they should be doing all of that work on. Should they be looking at it at a new middle school? Or should they be looking at all that work on Elm Street? And so we need to say, we want to look into it at, for example, the middle school, which is what this motion is, a new middle school. Get all of those answers. Get some more detailed plans. And then come back to the Board with that information. But they can't do that next step of work until we tell them which direction to look into. So that's where we are on the planning process.
Comment?
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Mosher, and then Ms. Hohensie.
Thank you. I enjoy listening to what Mr. Kaufman had to say. And I'm not disagreeing with him, not at all. But what I'm thinking of right now is if we saddle ourselves with any negativity in this initial process, that this can color all of our objectives that are ahead of us in getting started on this and to gather the information that he's asked for. I think that as we go along in this, that we are going to need not only all of this information, but we have to address all of these things and see how the plan conforms to his suggestions. And all of these things, like everything else that we've done with the renovations that we put into the other schools so far, they've all been addressed with all of their concerns, whether it was the snow loading on the one school or if there was, you know, the question of the sinks and so forth in Broad Street. There was a lot of concerns that, at the time, that, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Kaufman was silent on because he was not involved in it the way that we are now because we have this tremendous option in front of us. And I'm looking at the options that we have, and I say that instead of, you know, the renovation of Elm Street or the division of the students to different schools, which in the course of things would be temporary, the addition of the buses would be temporary. And these are all things that are, you know, part of the consideration. Also, the consideration has to be done that the new school will have modern amenities, electrically and plumbing-wise and everything else that is going to be able to accommodate the students and staff that is going to follow. And it's going to provide all of these upgrades and also give us a building that is going to be good for the next 50 or 60 years and at a lower cost than it would take to renovate or do any of these other things. So I say we have to, you know, open our eyes and do this in a logical way and say, yes, we need that new school. Yes, we know what's going to go in there. We know that the things will be brought up to state codes and for the comfort and the safety of our students and our staff, which are paramount in our minds. So yes, I think that the best thing that we can do is to stare down this new school as a proposal and set our minds to it and say, all right, let's tackle these... all of these things, one at a time, as they come up, as we have done with all of the other things from the renovations. And I'm fortunate that I have been able to sit in on these things and check the options that we've had on the renovations and to present conclusions and suggestions for the options. This is what we have to do now, and just think ahead and tackle these things one at a time and not just dwell on the negativity that we can dig up all at one time because that's not the way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Van Twyver?
Brian McCarthy had me convinced last year that we definitely need a new middle school. We need to have them with up-to-date rooms and, you know, first-class training environment. However, I believe with... I agree with Mr. Kaufman about the things that need to be decided upon before we go forward with this. I will vote for doing the new middle school. However, I don't want to bind us until we have all those questions answered. Now, there are two things that really kind of bother me. One is the fact that we don't have the right-of-way to some of the property. And the other thing is that there... I think you said there was like 70,000 square feet over and above what the other schools do. I'm against building another Taj Mahal like the two high schools with big, wide, you know, walkways and... I mean, it's... we've got to think about heating these places and air conditioning and air conditioning. So I would hope that we could get an idea about what this extra square footage is for and if it's not necessary to cut it out because we have to think about what it costs to run these places. So that's all I have to say. And like I said, I will vote for a new school. I'm sad to see that Elm Street can't be done at a more... you know, less significant amount because I really do love that school just looking at it. To me, it's a historical monument. I love the Keith Auditorium, and I hope, you know, the symphony can stay there forever. But it is old. It is lacking space for play... you know, playgrounds and... not playgrounds, but, you know, athletic fields and all that. So I really do feel that we need to go ahead with a brand-new school. However, I don't want to bind the new Board with, you know, something that's not quite complete in understanding, you know, all it takes to go in. I found that planning book by accident, and I have not read it through completely myself, but it sounds like Mr. Kaufman has done a rather good job of it. I don't know whether the JS SBC is aware of that book and all the things that are required by the state. So I think we need to keep a close eye that we meet the requirements of the state, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. Just as a kind of fun fact, one of the architects on the project, Daniel Bissin with Harriman, is one of the authors of this manual.
Oh! Well, that's good to know.
Yeah. So I hope he knows it. All right, go right ahead.
Well, I... but, Madam President, I do think that we need to contact the state and see if we've got all the things that will be updated in the next revision.
Right. So what happens at this point is we need to choose our alternative. And then we go forward with making details and such, and then that gets submitted to the state. We can't do anything. We can't break ground. We can't go to, like, zoning or planning boards until we've chosen something, refined the design, and had it approved by the state. So it's all laid out in that nice manual. So we're still at the beginning of the process. I know there's been, you know, talk about breaking ground, and it's premature to talk about those things because we don't even have a design yet. We have to... we have a concept, and we're saying, let's continue to work on that concept and turn it into a design. But we don't have enough to say, yes, we're going full steam ahead and we're ready to go. And our vote tonight wouldn't lock us in.
Like Mr. Kaufman said, now, you know, if we go... we say, yes, we're going to do this, then those people that hold the right-of-way that we need, you know, they're in a big bargaining situation.
Right.
Could inflate the price, but... which could add to the total cost.
Agreed. Agreed. And I just want to be clear that the motion tonight is not binding us to building a new middle school. It's simply saying that we are going to go forward with the new middle school option at the JS SBC, and then, you know, if we hate their designs, we can always say no. And those come back to the Board. Go ahead, Ms. Hohensie.
Thank you. And I'm glad things are coming back to the Board because that wasn't evident at the beginning when I started paying attention to this process. And I do not think it's negativity to be thorough in making this pivotal decision. It is unlikely, if this Board makes a turn and says, "We're going to go for a new building," that any consideration, any serious consideration, is going to be given to another option. I just think that the feasibility studies to precede any decision... I can't say anything about taking an option that has no easement agreement, no enrollment report that's required by state law, no redistricting proposal to know which students are affected, no hearing in those schools. So especially Elm Street, to see how the parents actually feel about this. No traffic study. We've got a new BPW site proposed on the west side of Nashua that they're voting on tonight. If that goes through and that's approved, that will be two additions to traffic, which is already difficult on the west side. You ask people in Ward 5, and they're already concerned about traffic. And you add both of these, it, you know, it's a big difference, and it's going to affect traffic. There's no transportation study. We have a lot of walking students for Elm Street. What is the cost difference? Because Penachuck and Elm are in the middle of the city, right down the center. This one's way on the west side, so there may be a lot more busing that's required. I think the special ed is important. We need to think it out, what services we're able to provide in a plan before we can... that we can even make a decision. I think that we haven't given enough thought to an alternative, like what if we took... Elm Street has about over 1,000, almost 1,100 students. What if we shrunk that down, not to 800 or 850, but whether it's in the new or the old? Shrink it down even smaller, add more to the other two newer schools, and leave that school in the center. Add a lot of special ed there where you don't need the big classrooms. They need smaller classrooms that fits the character of this old school. Get rid of the portables. Make a few fields. You'd have less students. You'd need less parking lots. But shrink that down and use some of the irreplaceable features. Maybe we have one school that concentrates more on the arts and the others more concentrate on technology or STEM. There... I mean, I think our superintendent said that one night. Not everybody's interested in athletic field. Some people like drama, like that theater. And that theater, we can't replace that in three different schools. We don't have the Brentwood school designed into this project, and that was one of the initial concerns. We don't have the differentiation of why this school has 70,000 or 80,000... this new one has more square feet than the other ones that are supposed to be equitable. It's...
So...
We've got the new Board members coming in, and they need to have a voice because they're going to have to live with this. You can't make an accurate assessment of the price, given so many unknowns. But I just don't think that we've looked at what other possibilities in terms of renovation we can. We have just one possibility for Elm Street, and it's expensive. Well, sometimes you change things around when you're designing a house, a little less here, a little more there, streamline it. Maybe we make bigger additions to the other two new schools so we're not investing as much into an old school. But we have some special ed needs that might easily fit into that building. They may not need as many athletic fields, and it might be more convenient to be in the center of town. We've also got to consider, you know, people that come out of district. If we're having a special ed facility that we're trying to invite other people to join us as we try to get rid of our out-of-district costs, that's an easy location to get to as opposed to way off on the side, on the western side, southwestern side of Nashua. I just think that if we make this decision at this point, it shapes all our future decisions. Sure, we're going to be tweaking it, but this is a pivotal decision, and I think we need more input, more feasibility studies, and more input from parents.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. There were workshops at all of the middle schools for parents. I know that when one of the new Board members, Jessica Brown, was talking about how she went to one as an Elm Street parent to learn about the options, which was great. The other thing I'd like to point out is that that kind of design work about tweaking here and there, that's the next step. But we have to decide, are we going to tweak a new school or are we going to tweak a renovation of Elm Street? And I think, Mr. Smith, you could speak to some of the accessibility issues at Elm Street because they did do a very comprehensive analysis of the structure of Elm Street.
Okay. The school basically has... any of the special education kids that come in that are handicapped come in on the far-right-hand side of the school as you look at the front. So the new proposed design, if we kept Elm Street, would be totally move that front entrance and put it in the back. So... would be totally move that front entrance and put it in the back. So, that'd be a fully accessible thing. But, so, there's really only one. And for a school that size, it's, it's kind of sad just to have one entryway that can be accessible.
What about bathrooms and corridors and such? Did, did they say anything about accessibility issues?
Yes. So, I mean, it's all inadequate. I mean, none of it meets state standards. And that's, that's really the key. Even if we, even at the, so, the 93 million-dollar project really involves almost an entire gutting of the school. Even, even the flooring has to go out. Uh, if you're familiar at all with modern construction, you, you put down metal decks and then you pour concrete on top of that. We have various types of, um, of construction methods used in that school, and it, it really all has to come out. It doesn't meet fire code. So, um, I, I just hearken back to when we renovated the, now, well, it used to be the high school, now it's the south high school. Um, we started out saying, okay, we're going to save the walls. We're going to save the roofs. We're going to save the floors. Uh, and we ended up, we should have just tore it down completely. It probably would have been cheaper a long run. Uh, we discovered all sorts of hazmat that, uh, we weren't even aware of. Just a little historical, the gymnasium floor, everybody saw a wood floor, but when the school was originally built, it had a rubberized gym floor. And it, that, the rubberized material that back then contained mercury.
Oh, no.
So, that, that skyrocketed our hazmat mitigation bill. Uh, so, it's, um, that's kind of my impression of Elm Street. And it is a beautiful building, and they just don't make them like that anymore. But I think once we start unpeeling that orange, onion, whatever, uh, you're, that 93 million may not be enough.
Okay. Thank you. Um, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just want to say quickly that I'm going, I am going to support this motion. Um, I agree with Mr. Mosher that we are in the conceptual stage. Uh, this was an evaluation of alternatives. It, it's not plans. It's not, uh, architectural plans. Um, we're premature on enrollment requirements. Okay? Yes, we're going to do enrollment requirements, but this is not the stage. It's at a later stage. Yes, enrollment is required, but latest stage. Same with redistricting. It's not required at this stage. Um, the traffic study has been done. I read it. Um, they did trip generation based on industry standards. Uh, also Elm Street, walking students at Elm Street, they're, they're classified as walking. 'Cause I looked into this briefly with some numbers that Mr. Donovan gave us. They're classified as walking because they're not taking a bus, but then really not, you don't know if they're walking. You really have to do a survey to find out how many kids are walking now on Elm Street, because a lot of them are being dropped off by their parents, so they're actually being driven. So, when you say walking, they're really not walking. Although, putting the school out in the southwest, you are going to get a lot less walkers, but we really don't know. We don't have any specific numbers. You can't say a lot of kids walk at Elm Street because you just don't know. It's unknown. So, um, I, I think that, uh, um, that, Brent, Brentwood also, I believe, was never a part of this. So, I don't know why Brentwood was, was...
Ms. Patrick, Brentwood is high school only or high school and middle school?
Yeah.
High school only?
Yeah. So, I don't know why that was even a part of this. Um, and as far as people making a decision on this, Mr. Mosher and Ms. Van Twyver, even though they won't be here next year, they were still elected by the, by the people. So, they, there's, the people are still represented in this decision, uh, even by those members of this board who won't be here next year. So, democratic process still works because, uh, people are making the decision who are represent, who are, were elected by the people on this board. So, and then next, uh, next year, when we have new members, they'll, they'll just take up the, the baton and they'll, and they'll, they'll go on with it. So, uh, I, I'm going to, uh, support this. Thank you.
Clarification?
Yes.
About the Brentwood, we, we didn't plan on putting Brentwood High School in with a middle school. We planned on putting that in the administration building and then the administration building in Elm Street. We're, or in, was the Burke Street. We were trying to move the administration out to make that building next to the Led Street Elementary School, um, 'cause they both have cafeterias, and that was the, the fix. So, that issue's not addressed. That leaves an unresolved issue out there by not addressing that.
Uh, Mr. Donovan, are there any current plans to do anything with the admin building?
Uh, not at this time. We're, uh, going to be looking at things, but I don't, I don't think that those are, are items that would be considered as we move ahead. Moving the, um, administration out to the southwest part of the city, I'm not sure that's a great idea. That's something that came up in the last few weeks, but it really wasn't, really wasn't anything to do with, do we refurbish Elm Street or do we build a new school? I mean, that's really the base question. All these other things, maybe we find room. I mean, we talked to the architect. Maybe there's room to put the administration building there. Maybe there isn't. But I don't think that should have anything to do with this vote. That's an ancillary thing.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Guarino.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think the, uh, adding administration to the, the new school is part of that 78 million. So, it's, it's really just, like you say, an ancillary. Yeah.
Okay. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Kaufman?
Well, I, I think everybody else should speak and I'll, happy to make a comment later.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Van Twyver.
I am opposed to including the administration building, uh, in this plan. I love it the way it is because it's equidistant. It's near the people that we service, and I was against it when we started looking at Burke Street, and I'm still against it. Um, as I said, I will vote for this with a stipulation that all those questions that Mr. Kaufman has presented get answered, uh, even though I'm not on the board anymore.
Okay. Yes, I, I agree with Mr. Kaufman. Those are all very reasonable and appropriate questions. So, anyone else? No, I'm not seeing anybody. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Uh, I think, uh, the traffic study alluded to by Ms. Hoenzie. If, if the new, um, Public Works facility does come into play and is on that side of town, that, the location of that facility, I don't believe is included in the traffic study that the architects did. Um, the other thing is I would appreciate clarification if the 78 million dollars includes, was it 4.6 or 4.8 million dollars for the sped?
It does not.
Okay. So, here's, so that's a big problem. Um, and the other part, so, we're not building out a facility to accommodate special ed inbound students, which has been a primary discussion on the four years that I've been on the board. The other problem I have with this motion mentioning the 78 million, well, number one, it doesn't include the sped, which is an option. That's the first thing. And secondly, once you place a number on it, essentially what you're saying is, this is our target and we're going to build against this number. Now, with the unknown costs, and I'm not going to go into the whole list again, of transportation and redistricting, um, amongst other things, this number is, is, I mean, it's, it's a total shot in the dark. And I think to mention a number at this stage is a mistake. I understand why you're trying to do it. If you want to, if you want to have a motion that, do we go renovation or new, that's a, that's a different decision than making a vote on 78 million dollars. Because that, um, that puts a stake in the ground that we already know is not going to be made. 'Cause it doesn't include the special ed, which is critical to the district. It doesn't include the transportation. It doesn't include the redistricting. It doesn't include the staffing or the technology. So, to, to put out a number, I think, is a, a big mistake.
Uh, Ms. Oden, would you like to revise your motion, um, given those thoughts from Mr. Kaufman, to say something along the lines of, I move that the board moves forward with option one, um, building a new middle school? Something to that effect?
Is that option one?
Option one.
Uh, option one? Uh, sure. I, I don't have a problem, uh, with that. Uh...
And that would take the number out of it and that maybe then, when, when we have more detailed plans, come back, we can make a more detailed motion.
Would you rather me withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Okay. I, I would like to withdraw that motion.
Okay. And then...
Mr. Mosher has to second the re- withdrawal.
Mr. Mosher, do you second the withdrawal?
I, I'm not happy with changing the, the motion, but I will withdraw the mo- the second.
Mr. Mosher, do you have a suggestion for language of the motion?
I would like to keep it, uh, keep it simple.
Okay.
And say that, uh, the motion should say that we agree that, uh, option one to build a, a new school is, uh, is the motion. That I will, I will second that.
Okay. So, the motion...
The construction office. But however, while I have the floor, I'd like to make one, uh, minor consideration in, in mind. I'm talking about traffic. If they, uh, build a, uh, a thing for the city, for the, uh, Public Works, that's on 111. That is on, uh, West Hollis Street. The school would be located at, uh, Buck Meadow Road and, uh, Main Dunstall Road, uh, in that area, which has nothing to do with the amount of traffic that one would generate against the other. Matter of fact, the, uh, the setting of, uh, more countryfied would be the, uh, the location of Buck Meadow and, uh, Main Dunstall. The, uh, the Public Works would have access to Route 111, which is, uh, the direct, uh, east-west, uh, route between the, uh, the trainpike and, uh, Hollis Line. So, I think that, uh, you're looking at it and you're not completely familiar with the, uh, the city, not like I have. I've been in the same location for over 40 years.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
So, what is the motion now?
Uh, we're, we're working on it. Um...
The new, the new school is option two.
Oh, all right. Option two. Oh, you're right. New choo- school is option two. So, the motion would be, um, I move to endorse option two, building of a new middle school, and request the JSSBC, uh, to, um, move forward with that option.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Do, do you have anything in there about the possibility of adding, uh, the money for the, uh, sped program?
I, I, the motion just says to move forward with building a new middle school and ask the JSBC, JSSBC to move forward with pursuing that option. So, that leaves the door open to then, um, making those detailed analyses to come back. It opened, it leaves it for the new. It does say, no, we're not going to pursue renovation of Elm Street anymore. So, um, first, Mr. Guarino, and then Ms. Hoenzie.
Yeah. I, I think that leaves the option open for, um, for any, uh, changes to it. Um, according to the chairman of the, uh, joint special, uh, they're, they're going to listen to the, uh, what, to what the, the school department wants as far as design plans. The, the plans are going to come back to us for, for approval. So, I think that leaves it open for the, for the, uh, special ed. And I want to agree with, uh, Mr. Mosher, what he said about traffic exactly. If you, if you look at a map of, uh, Nashua, he's, he's exactly spot on. Any DPW, uh, traffic study is not going to be in the same area. This is south, southwest. So, thank you.
Yes. 111 is the DPW and 111A is the, um, potential new middle school. So, go ahead, Ms. Hoenzie.
Thank you. I just want to know if we don't get the easement, would that result possibly in a main entrance through the only access we have, which is Cherrywood? And the, I mean, we don't have an easement. I, I can't go forward with something when we don't have it. I'd also like to know if this board would entertain members of the audience to have some comment before we vote.
Um, I, I'm not opposed to public comment. There's three people here. I think that's fine if they want to make a comment. Um, regarding, um, a main entrance on Cherrywood, I don't think that's palatable to, uh, the residents at Cherrywood or the school district or the members of the board who are on the JSSBC. Um, so, I don't think we would end up doing that. That would probably, um, affect our project significantly. So, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. There's nothing in the new motion that accommodates Ms. Van Twyver's reservations or mine, that all these contingencies will be resolved before any future decision is made. I, I, I cannot fathom why anybody would approve something without having a right-of-way to the property. At the most basic, fundamental level, why, why would you make a commitment like this? No longer 78 million. We know if we add the 5 million, you're up to 83, just to add with the special ed, plus those other variables that are unknown, including not owning the land or ri- having a right-of-way or an easement that allows you to access the property you want to build 200,000 square feet on. I think it's an insane vote to make. Until you get that access to the property, I don't think you should move ahead because you, you're just putting tons of resources, engineering time, into a facility you may not be able to, to build on because you never secure the property at a reasonable price.
Thank you.
Did you ever hear of eminent domain?
Well, I'm not sure everybody in the world wants their property taken, even if they're compensated for it. And that is an abuse of power.
Well, I don't, again, I know that the city has been in negotiations with the owners. It's, it's a very, um, uh, genial negotiations. Um, I think if at any point those negotiations hit a wall, then we have to come back. I mean, this is, again, we're not at the end of the process. We're not saying, this is what we're going to do gung ho, um, no other options. This is a final plan. What we're saying is, let's move forward and get all those questions answered. But we can't get those questions answered until we tell the JSSBC to move forward with one of the two options. So, um, did anyone want to make a public comment?
Move the question.
Okay. Mr., um, I, everyone in the audience shook their head at me, just for the record. Um, Mr. Mosher has, uh, asked that we move the question. Can we have a roll on the motion to move the question, please?
Okay. Uh, to move the question, uh, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Uh, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino says yes. Uh, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Hoenzie?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
We have one, two, three noes, one, two, three, four, five yeses. I think we need two-thirds. We don't have two-thirds.
Okay.
So, we can still talk about it.
All right. Did any...
The night's still young.
Did anyone else have any other items they wanted to mention? Ms. Hoenzie.
What this vote essentially does, it doesn't lock us down to a plan. That's mutable. We understand that. But it's a pivotal decision because we're no longer going to explore the other option. We're going to say, that's off the table. We're looking in this direction. So, all our energy will be going at a new building, and it's not like, well, we could do this here. We could do that there. It's not like we're comparing them any longer. So, this is a pivotal decision, and for all the reasons that we mentioned earlier that have been unaddressed, um, concerns, I still am going to vote against it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think, um, point of order, if you have a motion on the floor...
Oh, you are correct, Mr. Guarino. You cannot move to adjourn if there is an item on the floor. We voted on call the question. We did not vote on the, on the motion. Um, so, on that note, let's take a roll, please, on the motion. Everyone's spoken two to three times.
On, on the motion to approve, uh, the motion to endorse building the new middle school option two with the JSSB moving forward with that option, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Hoenzie?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
I have two noes and one two- I have two noes, and one, two, three, four, five, six yeses. The motion carries six to two.
Move to adjourn.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, the videography display on my screen did not happen until 7:40. I want to make sure that this whole program was videotaped.
Yes. Jimmy indicated, he's, he's nodding at me, that yes, in fact. It is recorded. It will be re-aired late.
Good, because I like to review these.
Okay. Yep. So, and we do have the audio recording going, so that will also be posted on our website, once it's available. So, yes, Jimmy's letting...
I'm not asking for an official record. I like to review these things. Why can't you people get that idea?
So Jimmy indicates that the recorder is going. It will be up on the ETV website. They're just having a problem with the cable, which is a Comcast issue. So we did have a motion to adjourn on the floor that was made at the exact same time you were asking to speak, Ms. Van Twyver. So unless anybody has anything else, I think we should vote on that motion to adjourn.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Ms. 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 Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We're adjourned at 7:05.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming. The JS SBC meeting was delayed until 7:30 because the aldermen have that DPW meeting. So I guess anyone is welcome to stick around with us. Thank you.